It is six, so we are live, everyone.
Okay.
Hello, Bruce is here.
Hi, Bruce. Okay.
Dave, Yekiel, Ellie and Dave, we have our five.
Okay, so Mr. Jackson, are you here? Mr. Jackson, can you hear me?
I am, I am, yes.
I don't see you, I can't see you. Okay, so. Okay, calling the meeting to order, let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we withstand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, Ellie, could you please read in the certification of compliance?
Yes. The time, date and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable and comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm just taking roll, Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable, Mr. Francebound, Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson? Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, swearing professionals? Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Vote, do you swear from testimony before this board? The truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, go on to the public agenda. Ellie, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we did receive word this afternoon that Gazarovski, representing Mr. Dexter for, hold on, application SP 2109A, which is the hotel that was started on Tuesday. Mr. Gazarovski is not able to attend tonight. I believe we were considering carrying this through the meeting date. We need to see the date and make that announced.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
John, can I ask a legal question?
Yes, of course.
So, John, the, the, the council and the client or the group that was opposing the application for the hotel apparently has a hotel on Route 70, which is fine.
Bruce, Bruce, Mr. Stern, if I can interrupt you for one moment. That, I have a conflict, I'm not the attorney on that matter. And so I stepped down, that's being handled by conflict counsel, Mr. Yulaki, so you have to...
So, let me, let me ask you a general question. Who has standing to, to oppose something, is it only the adjoining property owners or anybody in Lakewood or anybody in New Jersey or anybody in the universe?
There is...
Who has standing to, we're, we're stopping a meeting because a council floor, and I'm not, I'm not mad at them, I'm just asking a question.
The doctrine of standing is complicated and nuanced. And, you know, it's not something that, it's case by fact sensitive. It's, it's difficult to just answer that in the abstract, you have to have specific facts. I could refer you to the section on Cox, which is pretty, in Cox, which is pretty comprehensive. It's not that long, it's probably four or five pages if my recollection tours me. But it, it gives you what the issue is and the general rule is.
Okay, if you want to send that to me, I'm not going to hold up the meeting, but it just, it struck me as odd that we're not moving forward on the application because a group that's, that's three miles away is, is saying they're not available. And I'm not trying to deny their due process, it just doesn't make sense to me.
As I said, you'll have to address that with Mr. Yulaki.
Mr. Chairman, this is Adam Pfeffer, if I can, I understand that Ellie had recommended a date, but Mr. Yulaki is not available in that, it's the third meeting, the last meeting, sorry, the last Thursday of the month, the seventh. He's not, he indicated in an email that he wasn't available. I could do, I, I would, if I had my preference, it would be the twenty-fifth. I'm already have another application on that evening. I understand you having a meeting next week on the eighteenth. I, I would, I would request that we not move this to September and that we address this on the twenty-fifth, if that's okay.
I would be okay with trying the twenty-fifth. The one that you're representing on the twenty-fifth is the one that Mr., no, it's Mr. Penzer. Mr. Penzer has an application that's being objected to by Mr. Lichten. I am hesitant to push them off in, in favor of another app. I'm not sure what's going on with that application to begin with. I don't really know the best answer here. September first is our first September meeting and it's wide open. If some of these other applications later in August are carried, they're all going to end up leapfrogging each other anyway. So, we could try for August twenty-fifth and roll the dice and see what happens.
And, and Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, again, we're, just to recap where we're at with that application, we've had all direct, Mr. Gazarovski has had all of his direct, of his expert. We left off with Brian, we're just going to respond to, to the, the issues raised by, by the objectors, professionals. I don't think Brian needs more than fifteen or twenty minutes. I understand we have to reopen it up to the public. Again, I think the public only had one or two comments, it was one person. So I don't anticipate a very long, a very lengthy open session thereafter, it's closed for the board to deliberate and, and take a vote. I would be surprised if it took an hour. I'm not going to say it's going to take five minutes, because I know it won't. But I, I think if we had, honestly, somewhere between thirty and sixty minutes at the beginning of the meeting, so Mr. Yulaki can, can attend and then he can drop off the meeting, I would respectfully request that be on the twenty-fifth and we be placed first.
I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman. You concur? Is he still here? He got quiet. Hold on, you're muted. There you go, Yekiel.
Yeah, I have no problems, I don't want to take a whole meeting. I would limit it to half an hour, maximum hour, because Mr. Gazarovski could cross-examine Brian after he finishes and he's going to make a closing statement. And I have to open to the public, so...
No, I, I understand, and like I said, I don't, I don't foresee any of the testimony being lengthy at all. We've, it's just recapping some things that were brought up and clarifying, so we'll be very quick.
Okay.
So, John, if you, John, I would just ask if that's the board's decision, that we make the announcement and we're able to carry without any further notice?
The twenty-fifth.
Right, just, I would ask that Ms. Morris make this particular announcement since I've stepped aside.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
Members of the public be advised that application SP 2109A for RD Lakewood on tonight's calendar has been tabled until the August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, six PM public hearing, which will be held in this same format, virtually. The streaming link will be the same through the township website as it has been in the past. And anyone with issues finding that can certainly reach out to me via phone or email. No further notices will be provided.
Okay, thank you, let's go on to number one.
And so the first application for tonight is SP 1564B made by Harvard Partners. This is an amended major subdivision to create fifteen lots on Lanes Mill Road. It had been previously approved. My understanding, I'll let the applicant get into it, is that there had been quite a bit of delay in back and forth with the county on exactly what the county wanted for Lanes Mill Road. I believe the applicant has come back with an amended approval because some of lot sizes have been affected but ultimately by required taking by the county for road widening.
Okay, thank you, Ellie. Terry, are you there? Do you have any report?
Yes, I do, the board members should have a copy of our July twenty-first report.
Okay.
Reading on zoning, the, the bottom of page two.
Ellie, can you put it out?
Yeah, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Comment number two under zoning of our report, a minimum lot area variance is requested for proposed Lot 9.01, which would be on the northern corner of Lanes Mill Road and New Street, Haifa Lane. An area of fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven square feet is proposed versus the fifteen thousand square foot minimum. It's our recommendation, if feasible, and I'm sure we'll hear shortly, in lieu of the variance request, the adjoining lot, Lot 9.06, has over a thousand square feet of excess property rear. If there is a way to swap more of 9.06 into this and minimize or eliminate the variance rate, if not, I'm sure we'll hear shortly as to why. Comment three.
Why, Terry, Terry, why would you want that?
Because by doing so, Ellie, you eliminate a variance.
Okay.
The idea is you grant variances essentially as a last resort.
Okay, and Terry, this is a new variance?
It's been created with this application, yes.
No, this wasn't previously granted.
I, I don't recall if there was previous, if there was relief or not on that lot, I'm sure we'll hear shortly.
Okay.
Like I said, at first glance, if you look at the two lots, there is sufficient area to swap over where you could possibly at least minimize the variance or best case eliminate.
Okay.
Let's get the rest of the letter on the record and then we can hear testimony.
Okay.
Our, our following comment, comment number three, minimal lot area variances are requested for lots 9.13 through 9.16. Again, those lots are under the fifteen thousand square foot minimum and that's something that the board will hear testimony as well. That is it in, in terms of relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Terry, Mr. Pfeffer, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, time behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, if I can just ask, before I go forward with, with our testimony, I, I'm just having, just want to confirm that we have five members on. I'm scrolling through, I just, I don't know if they're not coming up on my screen, I just want to make sure we have in a quorum so we don't have an issue later on.
Do you want me to take roll again?
If you don't, Ellie.
I had, Mr. Garfield, are you here?
Yes.
Mr. Stern, are you here?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl still here?
Yes, you see me.
You're here?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer, are you here?
Thank you very much, Ellie.
Thank you.
As Ellie indicated, and Ellie also indicated, this application came back a couple of years ago. Since then, there's been back and forth between the county. The county has come in and made some requirements, some changes. Based upon that, we're going to have to come back before the board for a few variances. If I can at this time swear in Mr. Flannery and Brian, I ask after you're sworn in, if you can, just mark any exhibits that you're going to, to be relying on.
Mr. Flannery, do you swear from testimony before this board? Be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I can't hear him, can anyone else?
No. Brian?
No, I can't.
There we go.
Now we can hear.
Now you can hear me, okay. Brian Flannery, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. So this application...
Mr. Chairman, you accept them based on his numerous appearances before this board?
I'll take that as a yes.
Brian, you still there?
I am still here. I, I was waiting for someone to accept my...
Okay. I was muted, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this application, it says six point nine five acre tract and what was previously approved is fifteen R-15 lots. As indicated in the RVE report, the county approval expired before the subdivision moved forward. We had to go back to the county, the county required additional right of way. So what the applicant is proposing is six of the lots, taking, the, the maximum we'd be taking from any one lot is two hundred and seventy-three square feet. The smallest lot size we're requesting is Lot 9.13 and we're looking for fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven square foot for that lot. The average lot size of all the fifteen lots of the area up is fifteen thousand and thirty-two square feet. So these are very large lots. I, I would, you know, for Lakewood type lots, they're like five acre lots in any other town. It is large, large lots, they fit in with the neighborhood. Nobody's going to notice the two percent deviation in, in the smallest lot, which is 9.13. I mean, just, so the board gets some context. In the R-15 zone, you're allowed to do a density of two point nine dwelling units per acre and the fifteen lots that we're proposing is two point three dwelling units per acre. So we're eighty percent of what we'd be allowed to get density lots. Just going through the report, Terry indicates that the approval was first granted in two thousand and fourteen. The, the county sometimes isn't easy to get everything done. In, in the, in the process, that approval expired. Their master plan was updated, they required additional widening along the front. So the additional widening is a benefit to the, the general public and, and the de minimis relief that we're requesting is certainly warranted by that. RVE in their report had requested for Lot 9.01, which is the lot on the westerly corner of Lanes Mill and the, the new proposed road. The original plan showed the lot line coming as it, as it had previously and as RVE pointed out, there's a trapezoidal piece of three hundred and fifteen square feet that really is not needed in Lot 9.06. So we do have a, a plan that was submitted and, and was provided to Ellie and is posted online showing how that change would be. I, I have to apologize to Adam, he told me to, to mark the renderings. So if we mark the preliminary plat that was submitted as A1 and the map that was submitted showing the revision that we agreed to do per the RVE letter as R2, you can see that there's a three hundred and fifteen square foot trapezoid that comes out of Lot 9.06. Nine point oh six still exceeds the fifteen thousand square feet and 9.01 then jumps up to fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two square feet, consistent with the four lots on the easterly side of Haifa Lane that are three hundred and change short of the fifteen thousand square feet.
So, Brian, that's...
I think that's a reasonable solution, Chairman.
Okay. Brian, that's the only variance you have in the lot sizes, but you're describing...
That is the only variance that we have on the lot sizes. We're, we're requesting lot size three on Lots 9.01, nine point one three, nine point one four, nine point one five and nine point one six. And the smallest lot that, that we're proposing is Lot 9.13, which is fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven square.
And everything else stays the exact same as before?
That, that is correct.
And the only reason you requested this was the county wants the road widening?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have, do you have any questions for any board members?
Well, I, I'd like to put on the record the reasons we're asking for the relief that John has something to put in the resolution and, and in case there was somebody, I can't imagine why anybody would have a problem with this, but in case there was an appeal, I'd like to have the justification.
Yes, please, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
Also, I, I think there was a little misunderstanding based on the notice. The notice has the catch-all that any other relief the board says we need. We, we're not asking for anything other than what we've just proposed at this point. So the master plan of two thousand and seventeen on page two, under background information, it indicates all the growths that we've had. It concludes on page three. Based on this information, it's important that Lakewood Plan for Residential Development to house its growing population. On page seven, the same two thousand and seventeen master plan, the vision statement, it says encourage growth and development in appropriate locations consistent with established land uses. This is certainly consistent with the established land uses. The Municipal Land Use Law NJAC 40 colon 55D2 under the purpose of the act is A, encouraging the municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals and general welfare. It's my opinion this does this. And E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions and preservation of the environment. And, and I did indicate the, the density that's permitted under the ordinance and we're at eighty percent of that. So it's my testimony that meets that. It's a, we're requesting C2 variances. I, I could say it's a C1 variance, a hardship because the county's taken stuff, but it, it's very clearly a C2 variance. It relates to a specific piece of property, this is a property that had an approval. It had a county approval with one right of way with, the county said, the county needs more. We gave it to them and, and that's why we're here. The purposes of the Municipal Land Use Law would be advanced, I read them to you. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It's my testimony it can be granted without any detriment to the public good. The variance will not bear the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Relief that's requested on six lots is de minimis where the average lot size exceeds fifteen thousand square feet and the benefits clearly outweigh the detriment. My, my testimony and my opinion is there are no detriments.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any board members have any questions from Brian?
Mr. Abadi, I had, I had muted a couple of times. I'm not sure if he needed to speak or if Mr. Flannery covered it.
Brian, we had a discussion about the ninety foot lot width.
Do you have to be under oath? Stop.
I was talking to Mr. Flannery, don't listen.
Okay.
Brian, the ninety foot lot width on Lot 9.06 becomes a variance even though it's not the main access. David told me on the phone that that wouldn't be something that's an issue because the main access to that lot is off of the cul-de-sac, but it's still a ninety foot frontage along Lanes Mill. Is that an issue, does that have to be brought up? Or we shouldn't say anything to the board about it?
My, my opinion is that is not a variance because that's not the frontage for the property, that's a reverse frontage. And, and my opinion is actually that the, per the ordinance, if you have two frontages, you have one front and one rear, so this would be a rear. Therefore, it's not a frontage. So my opinion is it's not a variance. If the board feels it is a variance, we have the catch-all and, and we would request that relief as well with the same justification that was already provided.
Okay, thank you.
And I found out that Terry's review also did not call that out as, as a variance either.
Okay, thank you. And Brian, everything else in Terry's report you agreed to?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would open up to the public right now. Ellie, do you have any correspondence?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So, you'll notice on the screen, I had one comment from a neighbor who actually...
I have to mute her.
I'm looking, I'm looking, it's hard to tell.
Is it Brian?
I don't know. So I had one commented, that's labeled as comment one, but she later emailed me the second email and said, please withdraw the first one.
Is there anything?
Read this instead.
Okay.
Yes.
It covers everything, a common one, too.
It was Mr. Klein, I think, I got it, maybe, I don't know who's making noise.
Okay, thanks, yeah, it's much better.
Edka Schwartz, that's a female, right? Edka?
Okay.
She said, "Good morning, thank you for your assurance. Yesterday, my letter below will be read at the meeting later today. However, after reviewing the letter inviting residents to the meeting and considering my thoughts throughout yesterday, I would like to respectfully withdraw my letter so I can understand the issue more fully." So that's her email yesterday that I haven't read. She said, "Instead, please read the following question at the meeting. Good afternoon, I'm emailing in regard to appeal SP 1564A. My name is Edka Schwartz and I reside at sixteen seventy-four Hidden Lane off of Barrymore. There is a line in the letter inviting residents to this meeting that I found concerning. Would you be able to clarify what is meant by the nine, by the line? The applicant also seeks all other variances and/or waivers that may be requested existing or are proposed. This lines to see, seems to be very vague and to imply a sweeping approval beyond the issue at hand. Does this line mean that the applicant seeks only other variances only explicitly associated with lots 9.13 through 9.16 and 9.01 and only explicitly due to the county's reduction request? Or does it also include any other type of variance in regard to these lots or any type of variance in regard to other lots in the project? If so, why would it be reasonable to expect residents to support unspecified future variances such unseen? Thank you for your clarification, looking forward to participating in the meeting."
Okay, so I think...
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond to that?
I think Brian addressed it already, we're not seeking any new variances.
Correct, but I think their concern, Mr. Chairman, is Adam Pfeffer. Again, in, in my notice, as, as most attorneys do, they put what's known to be called the catch-all.
Catch-all, right.
And that, that is therefore, in the event the board makes a request of us, they say, you know, you want us to move something a little left, a little right, you want us to do a higher fence, something that's not required, that's not permitted per se, that catch-all allows us to, to not have to start from the beginning again and start a new application. We are not seeking anything else. A, a great example would be what I am just going to add with your body, whereas there was possibility of another variance being requested because of a front or a rear. We're not seeking that, but in the event the board said, you know what, Terry's not sure, Terry recommends it to be safe. So we would have that, that, that language in the variance to cover ourselves. We're not claiming anything and, and there's no changes to what's being presented. And if we were to make any changes in the future, we would have to come back before the board.
Okay, so basically the only changes is what was disclosed at the, the meeting right now, that's it.
Correct.
Okay, so I think that answers that correspondence.
I think the next one is similar, this is from Yohanan Miller of Long Beach Avenue. He said, "It has come to my attention that there will be a planning meeting discussing the changing of R-15 zoning in Rain Tree, including a request for waivers for all variances that they want. It seems ridiculous to give anyone free rein to make potential changes without the neighbors knowing and approval. I am requesting that this request be denied irregardless of what is decided regarding the five properties." So again, I, I think there's, there was just a confusion on the, the language in the notice.
Okay.
That's the extent of what I have for public comment.
Okay, so I will close it to the public, unless, Mr. Jackson, you have any other correspondence? I don't think so. Mr. Jackson, are you there?
Hold on one second, yes, I, I just want to, um, hold on, I just want to check with Ellie, because I, I got, you got the, the two emails that just came in, looking for crosswalks on Halifax and Lanes Mill?
I'm sorry, I did not get those.
Okay, can we get crosswalks? I, I have one, info of planning board, that is from Schlemmo Stein at Harston Drive. He says, "Can we get crosswalks on Lanes Mill and Halifax?" And he says, "Can we get no parking signs in yellow paint fifty feet from all stop signs and twenty-five feet from crosswalks? And three, can we get retro reflective street name signs?" There's, um, Edka Schwartz, did you get that one, Ellie?
Yes.
This is, well, we read her other one from last week, this is new now.
This came in at six twenty PM?
Yes, this is new.
That's new. I, what it appears to be, it says that, that the concern is that the catch-all, because they don't think the variances should be given, you know, the public having an opportunity to scrutinize it in advance. I'm paraphrasing what Joseph and Echo Schwartz said and it appears to be signed by a dozen people or so. But I, I think the applicant said that they're not asking for any additional variances, that that was part of the catch-all. So I think that comment has been addressed.
Right.
With recent, the crosswalks and the, and the signs, we would agree to do whatever traffic and safety says and, and the county, whatever the county allows. If they want crosswalks and the town wants, we'll, we'll do whatever's permitted by the town. That would be worked out during resolution complaints.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And anything else, Mr. Jackson?
That is it.
Okay. So, I will close it to the public, and I will ask for a motion on this application.
I would move to approve it. It's Ellie.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. One second. Dave and Jake, second. Ellie, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed Mr. Stern.
I was feeling unloved, yes.
I'm missing him here.
We can't see your picture. Come on.
Mr. Mauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. On to number two.
The next application is SD 2428, made by Oak Street Invest LLC. It's a major subdivision to create nine lots.
Okay. Terry, would you like to go through the report?
Yes, I will, Chairman. I'm reading from our review dated July 27th of 2020. As indicated on the top of page two, under project description, the revised plans indicate the applicant seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval to subdivide three existing parcels to create five new tracks for two duplex structures, four zero-line properties, and a multifamily site. Continuing on to page three, under submission waivers, we have a number listed, the B waivers, topo contours, and floodplain within 200 feet, as well as man-made features, C variances, plans, and profiles, C9 require road dedication or road widening easement, C13 EIS and C21 architectural drawings. As indicated below, we support the requested B waivers, B2, B4, B5, B10, since we have sufficient information on the design plans. With respect to the LY presence/absence, we can support, since this will be made a revision of approval, and if the line is incorrect versus what the applicant thinks, and it affects the plan, they're going to have to come back to the board anyway. With regard to profiles, we can support the waiver for hearing purposes with the understanding that we'll get required technical information during compliance if approved. Similarly, same thing for the road dedication and widening easements, we can support for hearing purposes only for the same reasons. As far as the EIS, the applicant has prepared or will prepare DEP documentation, which will include addressing environmental issues, so we can support that work. Architectural drawings, and this is the board's decision, we support the waiver for hearing if they provide as-conditional approval. Again, the board may feel differently, but that's our recommendations.
Garfield, do you want a motion to go along with the recommendation?
No, whatever you want. I'm asking for a motion either way.
I'll make a motion to go along with Terry's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. We're all in favor to grant the waivers? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ellie. Okay. Terry, could you please continue?
Yes, I'm going to continue on at the top of page four. I'm reading from section two zoning. Comment two, we note that there is a gore between lots 182 and 183, and the overall boundary of the project has not been confirmed. There's a foot discrepancy between the outbound and the sum of the rear lot lines. Therefore, the bullet rates listed below that are required may not be correct depending upon the final resolution. I believe Brian's testifying, I'm sure, in your testimony as to how the applicant wants to handle that issue. Continuing on, from your setback, variances required for lot 182, as well as a rear yard setback, as well as side yard setbacks, and the aggregate as well. I believe that's it for zoning. And finally, continuing on to page five, under design waivers, design waivers required for closing a non-racial side lot line between 181.04 and 182 on the revised plans. This is a common thing that has to be dealt with when you have non-rectangular properties. And the board has granted similar waivers in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Who's the attorney? Mrs. Weinstein?
Yes, I am. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Oak Street Invest LLC. As I'm sure the board recalls, we came before you about a couple of months back with this application, and the board gave us a lot of feedback. We listened to your feedback. At that, members had concerns about there being too many driveways fronting on Joe Parker Road and cars potentially backing out onto Joe Parker Road. We listened to you, and we have redesigned this application into what we believe to be a far superior plan. At this point, I think I can really turn to ask to have Brian sworn in so that he can actually describe the plan, the changes that we've made, why it's better, and then go ahead to address the variances and the positive and negative criteria with regard to them.
Okay. Brian? Mr. Jackson, are you there? Mr. Jackson, you're muted. Okay.
Anything else for us?
Where Brian in?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see him there. Referent testimony to give before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Brian Flannery-Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner.
Okay. We'll accept him. Okay. Brian, please reason.
The property as indicated before is on Joe Parker Road. It's lots 181, 182, and 183. We're back with a application. The A1 of the exhibits would be the tax map that shows that. A2 is an aerial, which shows the Gulfview Apartments behind us, an existing single-family along the RM and R20 zone line to the north of us. But the plan that I'm expecting the board is going to be very happy to see, and we have to thank them for coming up with a good plan like this, is because the last plan had some design issues that through the input we got from them, has been vastly improved to make a much safer project. The changes include the total parking on the site previously was 64, or the same number of units. We've increased it to 68. Previously, there were eight openings along Joe Parker Road where the cars weren't supposed to back out, but maybe they would. We've revised that to three openings. There's an opening to the two duplex units that there's an opportunity to drive in. All of the spaces of parking are for each of them. There's no backing out. There's no double stacking. They pull in, and then they have the opportunity to pull out the other driveway.
Brian, Brian, can I stop you for one second? There's two plans on the drive, on the share drive. There's one that you are presenting now, and then there's another one that's now on Ellie's screen.
That's a, the other one that's on the screen is a concept plan, and it was there to show that we could have done, and I hate these because a lot of times the board says, well, you're threatening us, and it's not a threat. It's to show an alternative design option. So, the multifamily lot, we're asking for relief for 15-foot side setbacks where the ordinance for multifamily lot says 25. That other plan is simply a concept plan. I don't think we even need to talk about it because I think the board is familiar with this site. You're familiar with my testimony last time, that it's in the RM zone. We could have done a 65-foot high building.
I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for cutting you off. Okay.
No problem. No problem.
So, Brian, do you have a circle of driveway right now on Joe Parker?
Yes. Yes. I'm sure the board is familiar with James Street, where, again, a county road, a very busy county road, the double stacking and the pulling out. On James Street, they made provisions to back up and push the units back. Here, we also pushed the units back. They were originally proposed at 70 feet. We pushed them back to 93 feet. It reduced the backyards a little, but it provides a much safer. This should really be a template for, on a busy road, how that can be done. It's a, as the chairman says, it's a circular drive, and off that circular drive is a safe, convenient, workable parking area for the four units, four parking spaces per unit. Again, as I indicated before, the prior plan had stacked parking, and the stacked parking at times can be problematic. We don't have any of that. We provided parking for the multifamily that exceeds the requirement. As I indicated, we, the previous plan, which had 64 overall, we've increased by four parking spaces, so that provides some relief. And the access points are separated. The county will be much happier with this plan as well, and the county may not have approved the prior plan, but...
Brian, there's no variance requested on parking right now.
That is correct. We exceed the parking requirement. We have 4.4 parking spaces per dwelling in it.
Okay. And sidewalks you're putting on all the frontages? And what's with garbage? What are you going to put on this?
The garbage, the zero-lot line duplex units will have rollout cans, and obviously, we need DPW approval for that. The multifamily lot has a dumpster, and the multifamily lot in all probability will be picked up by a private carrier unless DPW, there's some provision that DPW would do it.
Okay. Brian, so now show me, what's the only variance that you have?
The variances that we're asking for, and my opinion is they're de minimis, it's only on the multifamily lots. Four duplex units are on 11,600 square foot lot and 11,300-plus square foot lot. So, we exceed the lot coverage by over 1,000. We comply with all the side and rear setbacks. We provided a nine-foot side setback to our neighbor on the other side of the RM zone to be good neighbors. We had the extra two feet, so we provided that extra area in there. The only relief we're asking for is on the multifamily lot, and the reason we're asking on the multifamily lot is the standards that are given for the multifamily lot are typically to ensure proper separation for a 65-foot-high building with what could be 20 units on here. We're not 65 feet high. These are actually duplex units, so the 15-foot that we're providing is the same as the duplex, but we can't comply with the duplex standard. We have to go to multifamily standard. Because duplex by definition face the road.
Where are you asking for the variance?
We're asking for a front setback variance for unit number two.
Okay. I'm just going to point him out as you do him.
Okay. Thank you, Ellie. You make it much easier. I appreciate it.
Unit two is the front unit on Joe Parker Road on the northerly side of the parking lot of the multifamily lot, and 25 feet is required, and we have 24.96 feet to the one corner that's angled in the back, and because there's a jog in the right-of-way, the right-of-way was previously given to an inordinate width in the front, so we have 20 feet there. But from where the right-of-way is in front of the duplexes and the rest of Joe Parker, except this area where they gave a lot away, we have well more than 25 feet. So, that's a variance that's de minimis. Nobody's going to see it. It has no adverse impact on anybody. The other variance that we're asking for is a 15-foot, this is called a side setback because when you look at the multifamily lot, the front is along Joe Parker Road. It's got two sides and a back. So, we're asking for 15 foot to the decks where 25 feet is what the ordinance requires, and 25 feet they envision to a 65-foot-high building. We have 25 feet to the actual buildings, but we're asking for 15 feet to the decks, consistent with the 15 feet to the decks on the duplex units.
Brian, can you stop here? Why are you not calling this a rear yard setback? And what, if it was a rear yard setback, what would be the requirements?
If we could call these duplexes, which they are, except not by the Lakewood ordinance definition, the Lakewood ordinance definition says two side-by-side units facing a road. This isn't facing a road. They're facing a, so for duplexes, the rear yard setback is 15. You asked why we're calling it a side setback instead of a rear, because this is one big lot, and it's a multifamily lot. There's one owner for this lot that has the 12 units on it. And as such, if it's one lot, it has a front along the road, two sides, and a rear, and that's why I'm calling them...
So, you're now looking for...
That's why Terry and New Lines, who drew the plan, call that a side lot line.
So, if it would be a rear yard setback, you would be conformant?
If it was, if it was a, by duplex standards, it conforms.
Okay.
Now, you're not asking for subdivision approval? All these units, these duplexes are staying as one lot?
12 units stay as one lot with one owner.
Why are you doing that?
Because it's what makes sense for this property. The, these are duplex units that'll provide the housing opportunities of duplex units, but we can't call them duplex units because they don't meet the definition of being side-by-side facing the road. Our option was to do townhouses here or do a 65-foot-high building, and the townhouses...
What I'm trying to ask is why are you not coming in now and asking for subdivision approval for the lots?
Because it doesn't meet the definition of the duplex.
It doesn't meet the definition of a duplex, and zero lot lines are not allowed for multifamily units. Zero lot lines are allowed for duplexes and townhouses, not for multifamily units. So, per the ordinance, we can't ask for. We would love to have it be all lots and chop it up with lines. The ordinance doesn't allow it. We're coming in with an application that's going to provide the housing opportunities, but it's going to be one owner on a lot that's designated as a multifamily lot.
Okay.
Okay. Brian, do you have any other variances besides what you described?
Well, let me just go through them quick and put the justification on so that we get there. Going to Terry's report on page four, as he indicated, there is a gore on the property. The surveyor feels that the way it's depicted is proper, and if it's not, then we would have to, you know, if it makes it better for us during compliance, we would just correct that. If it creates a situation that creates relief that we didn't ask for, we'd have to come back to the board and get it. But it's the surveyor's opinion that what is submitted is appropriate, and you're not going to see us again except for resolution compliance. So, item three is the front yard setback that I referred to to unit two.
Okay. Can I just stop you for one second? Are you going to get them condominiumized afterwards? Just back to my other question. Instead of getting a subdivision approval, are you going to get them condominiumized? Get separate ownership for each one of those units?
The applicant has indicated that the intention would be to rent them, but we have no plan to condo it at this time. Certainly, sometime in the future, if the applicant wants to come back to the board and ask to conduit...
They would have to come back to this board in order for it to be condominiumized?
No, no, no. They don't have to come back in front of this board.
So, that's what I'm asking. If we give the approval today, is the applicant just going to be able to get separate ownership on each one of these units by condominiumize?
Mr. Renner, to answer your question, Ms. Weinstein is correct. Condominium apartments, fee simple, they are all considered forms of ownership and have really nothing to do with occupancy or use of the property by the court. So, if you live in an apartment or a condominium that you own, in the eyes of the law, it's the same type of use. So, ownership is something that you could just go to the DCA, file a deed, and convert with any kind of land use approval. That was litigated. You know, a lot of people disagreed with that, but I believe that is the way that the courts have ultimately come down on that question.
Just to understand, what I'm trying to get at is, there could ultimately be, based on our approval... there could ultimately be, based on our approval today, there could be ownership, separate ownership on each one of these units, even though we're leaving it today in one ownership without coming back to the planning board?
Okay, now, Mr. Renner, what difference does.
That was a question. Is that the case?
Yes, yes.
And my testimony would be that if that was the case, it would actually be better because the owners take more pride in ownership of their property. You'd have a condominium association that would own the entire lot and you'd have the owners that would have that pride of ownership. So in a way, it's.
Mr. Flannery.
It's also a way of circumventing.
Don't agree with that. Renters are of no different status than owners. They don't, in the eye of the law, take care of their property any better or worse than anyone else. So.
Okay.
Be that as it may, whether or not it's condo is beyond the purview of the planning board, which I think answers Mr. Renner's question. But as of now, the applicant does not have intention to condo it, but they.
Mr. Renner.
Mr. Renner, I think you are, although, addressing something because I think there are peculiar differences when things are owned under one entity and when they're owned by individuals. For example, owner, it's easier to fix the roof. It's easier to fix the driveway. It's easier, you know, whatever. But when you have all different individual unit owners.
Mr. Jackson, you have an association. You have an association.
I just really wanted to know if there's a new madness going on trying to circumvent the ordinances? Not necessarily with this application, but it's good.
That certainly wouldn't be a madness. The ordinance would allow us to do this as condominiums.
Right, that's what I meant. I mean, circumventing the duplex ordinance by.
Mr. Renner, I think the board has seen similar to this before, where this is kind of done as a shared driveway and they drop lot lines down here and make all sort of weird lot lines in the back. In my opinion, that's actually worse. But the board has seen something kind of like this before, where they do actually subdivide these as their own little lots and they all get one little arm that goes out to the road. And it's not something the board hasn't seen.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those developments.
Okay, please continue.
So continuing with the variances, the rear yard setback variances for lot. Item three, it talks about the, no, item four talks about the rear yard setbacks for lot 182. That again is this multifamily lot. Item five talks about the side yard setbacks, which are the ones that look like rear yard setbacks. And item six is minimum combined side yard setbacks, again, for the same lot, where you're supposed to have 60 feet for the two of them. And again, in this particular case, it's really not a side lot line. So with respect to the proofs for the variance relief that's requested, per the 2017 master plan, on page two, the background and growth information indicates all the growth in Lakewood. It concludes on page three that based on this information, it's therefore important that Lakewood plant for redevelopment of its housing, growing population. And this certainly does that in an RM zone. The governing body designated this as RM where they want density. We're providing density less than what the RM provides, but we're providing a product consistent with the adjoining uses. Master plan strategies on page eight indicate create a range of housing opportunities and choices. And this is doing that. We have Golf View. Off the top of my head, I forget the name of the other duplex development just down the street.
Tamarind Park. It's called Tamarind Park.
Tamarind Park, correct. F is strengthen and direct development toward existing communities, which this does. Seven is encourage redevelopment of existing underutilized sites. And certainly for the RM zone, three houses, it's an underutilized site. Traffic and congestion on page 23 talks about compact developments and that's what we're providing here. The municipal land use law, NJAC. I forget the ends. I'm getting old, I guess.
40, 55, D2?
Yes, D2, under the.
Brian, that's a good student.
She's young though.
At this point, she's far beyond the student.
The student has become the master.
I have to type the minutes, so it's pretty much memorized at this point.
It's my testimony that the board can grant this relief without any substantial detriment to the public good. It will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We're talking about C2 variances where it relates to a specific piece of property. We have a piece of property near Golf View Development in the RM zone. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced. The variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The benefits outweigh the detriments. And in my opinion, there's no detriment here in that we're providing housing opportunities that are consistent and fit in well. And the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zoning law.
Okay, Brian, is there anything else in Terry's report that you can agree?
I just have a quick question. I mean, I can answer that, Brian, answer that question.
Brian, could you agree with the rest of the report?
I don't think there's anything. There were a couple items that he asked for testimony on, but we would certainly satisfy all the comments in his report.
Okay, Mr. Renner, you have a question?
What's behind units nine, 10, 11, and 12? We asking for the, I don't know, side yard, rear yard? I'm all mixed up, but behind the unit.
Behind the units, what's the Golf View condominiums? You can see that on, Ally has the aerial rendering.
Yeah, so she has to move over or drop more to the left and then behind those units in the left, right? Is that what I'm supposed to do?
Well, this Golf View wraps all the way around the property.
Okay.
And I think it looks like it's pretty wooded behind that property, right?
Well, there's a little bit of woods. Our, this property is wooded. The property behind it is not because the Golf View wraps all the way around it. I think we're going to get a Google map.
Okay, hold on.
And for the record, I didn't teach Ally how to do any of this.
She's quick.
I don't know where we are on Joe Parker, though. I'm looking for Golf View. Are we down here?
I think you're a little further south, Ally. That Long Beach Avenue is the cross street.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah? Joe Parker, right? Hi, Dave.
Okay, the phone went dead.
Good there.
You can see the Golf View apartments and the trees in between. That's us.
Oh, south side.
Yes, yes.
South side, got it.
That's what happens when the plans are upside down.
Sorry.
Message is all up. Just saying.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
Okay, do any other board members have any questions for Brian?
The other thing I just wanted to ask, did you see the. Usually I don't see so many comments on the Shetree Commission over here. They have all types of comments. Did you get to review them and could you agree with them?
My testimony on the Shetree Commission would be what it always is, that we will do whatever is required by the ordinance and whatever is reasonable is determined by the board engineer.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions? Dave, you have a question?
Are you including a play area for children?
No, there's no specific play area indicated because all of these have duplex-like backyards.
They all have a backyard. They all have a porch. They all have their own, right?
Yeah, the porch is, you know, it's not a play area.
Yeah, I know. Behind the porch, they also have a play area. Okay, any other board members have any questions? Yes, Bruce.
Yeah, no, just no question. I just wanted to acknowledge that the applicant heard what we had to say and came back with a vastly improved plan. And I tend to agree with Brian. This should be a template for especially busy roads. That we're not just doing these double stack things and people are like ripping their lives, zooming backwards during rush hours. So job well done, and I think this deserves our support.
Right.
The only thing I would request on that is if that's used in the future, don't say Brian Flannery recommended it because my clients will not be happy with that.
Okay, Bruce, I would second that. I would say thank you to the applicant for listening and coming back with a much better plan, with nobody's backing out on a busy road, no stack parking, nothing. I think it was a job well done.
And we want to thank the board for all the good feedback because yes, I think we did this one together.
Right, okay, thank you, Ms. Weinstein, give it over. Okay, now I would open up to the public. Ally, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we did get one email. I think this is the same gentleman from before, Schlemmerstein with Lakewood News. He said, hi, please clarify how many units? Two duplex structures equals four housing units. How many apartments will be in how many apartment buildings? Terry's report says 16. Please explain. And here he is, signing his name for the sign-up part of the drive.
Okay, Brian?
There's 16 units in eight buildings.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other correspondence?
That's all I've received.
Okay, so I'm closing it to the public, unless, Mr. Jackson, you have something?
No, I got the same one that Ally did.
Okay, so I'm closing it to the public. And I would ask for a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Stern moves to approve.
Second.
And Dave seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yeah.
Mr. Herschel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to number three.
Thank you very much tonight.
Just a moment. Our next application is SB 2380. It's a congregation to care.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Yes, I would, Chairman. I'm reading from our July 23 report. And just noting on the project description, the revised plans indicate the applicant seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for construction of a two-story synagogue with basement and associated parking. The preliminary architectural boards indicate the synagogue will have a sanctuary of 1,494 square feet in size. The applicant proposes to further develop the site with parking, stormwater, utilities, landscape, and lighting. Continuing on to page three of our letter, under submission waivers, we have traffic study, proof of submission to Ocean Planning Board. The B waivers, topo contours may or may features within 200 feet. C waivers, plans and profiles, EIS and tree protection management. As indicated per testimony from the applicant, unfortunately, they could not obtain current traffic data because of pandemic conditions. We concur with the applicant's position that county planning board is not required. We can support the B waivers as noted since we have sufficient site design information. With regard to utility profiles, again, we can support this for hearing purposes with the understanding that we will get adequate technical information during compliance if approval is granted. Submission waiver for EIS, we can support since the applicant supplied similar paperwork as for the car for permit for the Oak Street corridor project. We recommend waiver of the tree protection management since this site has numbered toward trees in what's current condition.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendations? Moved. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, please, Terry.
I'm going to continue under section two zoning, beginning at the top of page four. As indicated, variance is required for rear yard setback, side yard, as well as aggregate side yard setback. Building coverage and perimeter relief is required as well. That is the variance relief and signed waivers. The driveway exceeds the 30-foot maximum in the code. The board has granted several similar waivers recently. And finally, a waiver is required with respect to street trees. Based on the design, you have access and paving along the entire property frontage. So there's no realistic way of having, you know, trees there. And that's our comments, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, who's the attorney on this application? Mr. Stein? Mr. Klein, are you the attorney? You're muted.
I'm muted. Hold on.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I do. Okay.
Hi, it's David Klein for the applicant, standing in for Maurice Rosenberg. Maurice is out of town. I'm going to hand it over to Glenn Loinz, the engineer. But the basic idea here is that this is a small synagogue to service the local area. And, you know, for the most part, there's, you know, as Glenn is going to explain, there's no simple hall, no heavy use in the basement. It's a modest, small synagogue to service the local residents primarily, you know, walking there and the immediate neighborhood.
Okay. Glenn, are you there? And Mr. Jackson, could you swim in, please?
Mr. Loinz, where are you? There you are. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony again before this program? Be the truth, the whole truth, and not but the truth.
I do. Glenn Loinz, engineer, professional planner.
Okay, we'll accept you. Please proceed.
As Mr. Loinz indicated, we're proposing a small synagogue on what were originally subdivided as two duplex lots in the Bradhurst area. When that whole subdivision was done, or however many blocks this is. We're building on is the one that's yellow. They were left larger. They weren't originally subdivided as duplexes, but they are the size of two duplex lots. We are posing to have a parking lot in the front of the building that creates that design waiver so that people can pull in head first off of Bradhurst Avenue. And we actually have an area where we double stack the parking to get an additional six parking spaces. We're providing 15 altogether.
How many do you need? Are you asking any variance on parking?
No, we need 15.
And you're giving 15?
Yes, so the double stack allows us to provide 15.
How big is this sanctuary?
The sanctuary on this is 14. Is one that was 484 square.
Look, I see the building is 31, 49 square feet.
Yes.
But the main sanctuary is only on the 1,500?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The main sanctuary is approximately half of the building. If you look at the long.
I'm sorry, do you want the architectials open?
You cover it up. Ally, are you hearing Mr. Loinz clear?
No, he's breaking up quite a bit.
He's breaking up? You can get a record out of it?
Yes, I can hear now.
Okay, so, Mr. Loinz, please speak into the microphone. You're breaking up.
Slower and a little louder.
Okay, I thought it was only me. Ally says you have the same problem. She has to make the record, so please. Okay, thank you, Ally, for burning it up.
Right, looking at the architectural plan, approximately half of the first floor is the main sanctuary. There's a small women's section, home room, and all these amenities that you have. and stairways upstairs and down.
What's on the second floor? Any other?
On the second floor, there's a, there is the.
As is Nosham, the lady shul.
The main lady shul upstairs. Again, it provides two stairways up and down and bathroom. So you have about 800 square feet upstairs, so.
And the basement, what do we have?
And then the basement is the mikvahs, dressing room, bathrooms. There's a very small warming kitchen of about 80, 85 square feet and a secondary room for possibly, you know, a lunch or just.
There's no big, there's no big room to make a big simchol over here.
No, no big simchol. There's no plan to have any big functions. This would almost be, you know, like an after-party meeting where you'd want to warm up some food for.
So there's no outside rentals on this secondary room?
No, what I'm standing is there are no outside rentals.
I think it's too small, but I just want to put it on the record.
Yes, so it would be really just for the use of the congregation.
Okay. So now, you want to go through any variance you have on this?
So we have, we have variances. Trying to find the letter.
Ally has it up.
Okay. So we need a rear setback variance, 20 feet is proposed. We have 15 feet. It says, small, you know, so we have, we're five feet short in the back. Side yards are 8.94, and the other one is, I'm trying to do the math real quick. And then we have the combined setback of 1671. So what we've done, you know, it is a small shul. We kind of have the same setbacks you would see for a small residential house in the neighborhood. And lot coverage, we're just over the lot coverage a little bit, 3149, where 25% is proposed. I think all these variances for this type of neighborhood shul are in keeping with, you know, the intent of the ordinance, and I don't think they would pose any harm to the zoning ordinance or any substantial detriment. Other than that, I've been through the letter. Come with any of the comments that were in the letter. Oh, there are the design waivers. I apologize. The one design waiver, because we have the parking across the, almost the entire front of the property, we have that very wide depressed curve. As you know, the curves out in this neighborhood are all depressed, they're that slope belched block, so we don't, ours really doesn't have what you would typically see as a driveway entrance, but it is a wider depression than normal, just so we could get those parking, off-street parking spaces. And as far as street trees, on one side, we have a sidewalk coming out to the street in the little strip between the parking and the property line. And on the other side, we actually, we have our utilities that come into the building, which we can't park or plant a tree on that. So on the, as, as, it's Abby, uh, Abby, sorry. As Ally is just showing, on the left side where her arrow is, that's, that's where there's utilities, the other side, on the right side of the property, that's where it's a sidewalk for access to the building, so you don't have to walk through the park.
So could you just, I think you skipped over the zoning, the perimeter buffer?
Well, the perimeter buffer is around the, would be the 20 feet that the ordinance requires on three sides of the building. Yeah, we're in a residential neighborhood, so the, you know, there's not a lot of activity in the back other than the handicap ramp and the entrance to the mikvah. We will put fence up around the, around the rear and sides of the property.
Oh, okay. So you're putting up.
Right, and right now, where Ally's arrow is, that's an open space lot. That was originally a street right-of-way, but that's an open space lot, so on that side, so there won't be, there won't be another building directly next to us. And on the left-hand side, where it says block limit, there's also, I think it's a nine-foot-wide strip of land that was left between the major blocks.
But you said you are putting up a fence, rear and the side, right?
Yes, we'll fence the rear and side.
Okay.
Rather than the landscape.
Ms. Lyons, what are you doing with garbage? I don't see any containers.
Garbage is on the left rear of the building.
You're going to have a dumpster?
Left side, yeah. We'll have a small dumpster for roll-out cans. They'll be rolled out to the street on collection day. Again, we don't have it, we're not going to have a simchol, so we're not going to be creating a lot of trash, so that should be sufficient for the ones the guy just needs.
Okay.
Can you just jump to the tax map for a second, Ally? Can you pull up the tax map? So this spot, so I see that it's like, where it's highlighted, the yellow, and it's like that on every block. Why is it like that? Why was the, why are there not separate lots there for houses? What am I missing?
They, they were, at the time, my recollection, and I pause, I may be, I may not be correct, but my recollection was there were lots out there that were owned by other people, and they did not want to be involved in the overall subdivision of the property into, into the duplex, for whatever reason.
Oh, so that's.
I put up the current tax map that shows the subject lots.
Oh, okay. So they are actually separate lots, and they are, okay.
Highlighted before was all four of these 4.0 lots. That was just not the current tax map. The application is actually just on these two.
So just on those two that have 4.02? Oh, no, you're saying after. Where's the, the public lot that they were talking about?
So, okay, so we're 403 and 404.
03 and 4? Yeah.
If you go back to the tax map.
Three and four, so is the, is the one right to the right of 404, is that the public lot?
Yes. So you see there's a little 405 right on our lot?
I see, I see, yes.
So there's that, there's this, there's a strip of property there from where that saw Avenue making on that side.
Which can't be developed, it stays as a buffer there.
Correct. So that's an additional five feet of buffering that we have to, and then that's, and then the rest of it is a 25, 25 permanent township lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Glenn, everything else in the report you agree to, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions for Mr. Lyons? Okay, we would open it to the public. Who's speaking? Mr. Stern? Who? Jakey, I'm sorry. Oh, you're breaking up. Okay, Jakey, go ahead.
Is there any way to get them out without the parking, get more without? Because it seems like this parking is a disaster.
Ally, did you get the question?
Yeah, Jake is breaking up, but he's asking, is there any way to get the parking not laid out the way it is now? Because he said it seems like it's going to be a disaster with just this giant open parking lot and shared driveway entrance.
And it's also double, double stack parking.
It's a double stack.
If we revised it to be head-in parking, we would be, you know, with an aisle in the middle, we'd really be lucky to get eight, maybe 12 spaces. And again, then you have an odd, and that's right up to the property line in the front. Really, six, six or seven.
Which road over there?
Bradhurst. Right, the other street.
It's not, it's not such a busy street.
It's not a busy street. Again, it's, it's not for.
And I think what you testified, it's more of a local synagogue that people are going to be walking toward.
I did testify, yes.
It's a community synagogue.
A community than a, you know, we're expecting most of the Congress, you know, from, in 200 or 300 feet in any direction from the building.
So they won't be using the cars?
On rainy days.
Okay.
How, where do you get access to them?
Who's speaking?
It's Jakey.
Okay, Jakey, please. I don't see you. Ally, can you repeat the question?
Jake, we can't hear you. You can try either calling in, or if you want to text me, I can text to the board. I assume you can hear us, but we can't hear you.
He was asking about access. I think as far as access to the building itself, there's two ways you walk from the street to the building. One is through the handicap, you know, the handicap area that's diagonally straight. That, because that leads right to the front door, or there is a sidewalk along the end property line. So from sidewalk by the street, you have a sidewalk in, across the front of the building, and then into the, into the front door of the building. Handicap access is a ramp that goes around the back of the building on the, on the right-hand side.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any board members? Okay, Ally will open to the public right now?
I have received nothing from the public on this.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, did you receive, did you see anything?
Let me take a quick look.
Do you want to make sure before we close the republic?
Sure, I just need to take a quick look. I don't see anything. Let me double check.
Mr. Herschel, it's David Klein. I just wanted to respond to one of the questions that you had, that small secondary room in the basement is intended to be a library. It has room for about a dozen bookcases and a large table, but that's the extent of it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I did, I did receive a text from Mr. Meyer. He was asking about, is the sidewalk providing entrance to the side and the back entrances? Does, I'll let Mr. Lyons answer that.
Yeah, that sidewalk that runs down the right side of the building would provide access to the front entrance, almost an emergency access exit. That door gets on the side where Ally is now, and around to the back for the rear entrances to the, to the main sanctuary.
Okay. All right, let's move. Okay, let's, is everybody on? Jakey, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have a call. We didn't lose anybody. I would ask for a motion on this application.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the application. It's Ally.
Okay, Ally moves to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave seconds. What? Roll call for this.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rennett?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, now we hear you loud and clear. You must have logged back in again. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes tonight. We have the minutes?
We do have minutes, yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Do you need a call for that? Because I can't vote on the minutes.
Move.
Moved. Second, all in favor? I don't think you need a call for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm not voting.
Approval of bills. Ally, you can vote on the bills.
The bills.
Who's getting paid there?
No one.
All right, I make a motion.
Okay. And we have a second on the bills? I'll second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
We'll see you Tuesday.
Right.
Ally, good job getting me out.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, good night. Thank you.